Meeting of the Board of Appeals will now come to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Mendez, absent. Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. Gisano?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Callen?
Present.
Mrs. Curley?
Present.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the minutes from the last regular meeting of May 2nd.
So move this chairman has read.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Callen, second by my Mr. Cole. All in favor?
Aye.
First case will be number 9788, 99 and 99 and one half, High Rock Street, to allow the conversion of an existing two-family residential building in zoning District R2 into a three-family residential dwelling with less than the required area, 5,325 square feet and frontage 54.50 feet, exceeding lot coverage minus 42 percent and having fewer than six parking spaces required by Section 9 of the Zone Ordinance. You've got the floor. So have you give your name and address?
Who's going to speak?
Give your name and address to the secretary, please.
Okay. My name is Rose Y. Rose, 99 High Rock Street. That's probably 99, 99 and a half. Okay, um, yeah, what happened is, uh, my house is a two-family house, but it's a big house, it's a 18-room house, so I bought it since 2003, so I never, ma, I cannot rent it upstairs with one family because it's too big. One time, I tried even myself to live upstairs, it was too much because it's five bedroom upstairs, so that's when, the last time I tried to rent it separate, after one month a lady's come and tried to make any trouble, and then I shut it down. I says, "I want to try the best I can to make it legal." Three. Because it stayed empty for, for a long time.
That's not what you said to me. When I pulled up to look at your property, you were out front.
Yes.
And I asked you how long you own the house? And you owned it like 11 years or maybe?
None of my studies, 2003.
2003?
Yes.
All right, and I said to you, "Why is it you own the house all these years and now you're just deciding you want to make, you know, another apartment?" And you told me that you had, with a lot of people up there, the second floor, and they had more people, and it was just too much going on, so you started to rent it out. And you rented out to a woman, and that you had a hole in the floor, and you didn't repair it, so she turned you in. And the only reason you're here tonight is because you got caught.
No, it was for one month.
I don't care if it was for 10 months.
Wait, wait.
You still rented it out, and it was illegal.
Just for one month.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It's for one month because she turned?
That would prove quick.
Excuse me?
Yes.
It was for one month because she turned you in. That's why it was for one month.
Right.
You told me that yourself.
No, 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 it's on the lease.
Well, you said to me, "She turned you in," and that's why you had to come to the Board of Appeals.
Then I don't want to argue with you.
You're not going to argue with me because I know what I heard.
So I've been there for 14 years. I believe most inspectors know me. You can call anybody, then, whatever aspect you call Rose, then all those, I'm a street guy. I'm not a guy, um, doing anything wrong.
That is what you said to me. So if you've lived there, if you have lived there for 14 years with all those bedrooms up there, why can't you continue living like that?
No, that's my house. So I can pay my mortgage, I pay my taxes.
You've been there for 14 years?
No. If you look on your, on the city, legal, you see, um, you, you see, two-family house, five bedroom upstairs, three bathroom and a half, upstairs is one bathroom and a half, second floor, one full bathroom, upstairs is full bathroom. There is nothing wrong there. There's only one thing, the, uh, the way it is, is a big house, rented with the one family from second floor, is too big, and then you can't, you, when you rent it with one family, they can't come with like 15, 10, 15, 12 people there. That's, my community cannot accept that. It's too much.
But you've been living like that all these years, that's why I'm asking you.
No, because myself, I consider that's my house.
Right.
I pay my mortgage.
Right.
So I can't leave all, all the house if I want to, if I can't pay my mortgage. You know? So I can't pay my mortgage, I don't have no problem with my mortgage, I can live on that other house, right? Do I cannot do that?
Then why didn't you go down to come to before the Board of Appeals in the first place?
Because actually, I want to rent it out because the house is too big. I want to put two people upstairs, two, actually, there is three people on the second floor, mother, uh, daughter, and a son. That's it, because I don't want to cloud it. When, when I make it, if I put a one-family upstairs, it's going to be a lot of people.
I understand that, but why didn't you come before the Board of Appeals from the first day that you start, before you rented it out to that woman? And make it legal?
What you mean, the, uh, the second floor?
No, the third floor, where you want to make any other apartment.
Before you rented out, got caught, turned in for renting the apartment illegally, why didn't you come to us before that?
No, no, oh, okay, that time, I don't understand that. Because I know it's legal, um, like, three and a half bathrooms. I believe it's, there's no problem for, from downstairs, because I don't think there's nothing illegal there. Because it's one, that says 18 rooms, three bathroom and a half, one and a half bathroom on the first floor, one full bathroom on the second floor, one full bathroom on the third floor. If you, if you go to the city and the legal, um, um, thing, you can see, they said that there, I never believe it's illegal upstairs to put on somebody else upstairs.
It's a two-family?
Yes, it's two-family.
When you bought it, it was a two-family?
Yeah, I bought it.
Why didn't you put three different people in there and make it illegal?
Because there is nothing wrong in it. They said, you say yourself, I believe you got a paper that says, three and a half, three, uh, there is, uh, six bedroom, five, uh, three bathroom and a half, one and a half, one bathroom and a half on the first floor, one on the second floor, one on the third floor. There is nothing wrong there.
You could put four more bathrooms in the house.
No, 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 I, no, no, I bought it like this, and you know it.
Oh, you bought it with family?
No, 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 you know it, you put it up there, you put it in the bed.
I know it's a bed.
Yeah.
A lower version of an existing two-family house.
Exactly.
Two families.
Yeah, but you, you, do, true, I cannot live upstairs?
You can live upstairs, only one person can live below you.
That's right.
It's a family house.
That's right, everybody with my sister, unless I, I live with my family, everybody can live on our house, right?
When you rented the third floor to somebody else, you tried to make it a three-family house.
That's why I'm trying out to make it legal.
Well, you tried to do it illegally, got caught.
All right, so, I have a question, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
When you bought the house, was that unit up there, was the bathroom up there, was the kitchen up there?
Yes.
Somebody had been using it as a, as a three at that point in time? Well, you knew, I mean, that doesn't make it right, I'm just saying, it was a three-family, it was an illegal three at one time, you would have been much better when you bought it as a two at that point, to try to make it a legal three. So, now I understand why you're here now.
Was there a kitchen on the third floor?
No. There is no kitchen there.
How did you rent it out?
Um, the way I rented out?
Your house, and you rented it out?
No, somebody can, want to just sit in there to take a shower and go to a, they don't want to, like, you know, they don't want to hook that on, and most people don't want that.
Yeah, but that isn't a proper, um, thing for a family to live in, there's no kitchen, it's not proper.
You have drawings, you have floor plans, you have a plot plan with parking?
Yeah, 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 we have it, yeah.
Did the inspectors go up and look at that third floor?
Excuse me?
Did the inspectors go up and look at the third floor?
Yeah.
And what did they say about no kitchen?
There was one up there one time.
Yeah.
I know, I know, that's what I don't understand, he's saying there's no kitchen, and I know there was a kitchen.
I was up there.
Now, no kitchen. There was a kitchen, I don't understand.
Yeah, but he did say he was going to bring a letter here for all to the park, and he doesn't have one.
No, that, they will give it to us.
Wait a minute, you don't have a letter, you were required to have a letter for all to the park and across the street, a KIP, Academy, right? And you were told to bring it with you, and you don't have it.
Not yet, they're leaving tomorrow.
But you had a month to do it, not tomorrow, you've already had a month. Now you're telling me that tomorrow you're going to speak to the people.
Trying to get KIP to produce it.
And you want us to vote for it, and let you bring it in later. Well, I'm, I'm, I will not vote for that, like that.
Okay, so we'll bring in a letter then?
Well, you're going to have to either continue it, I don't know what to tell you to do, but you didn't do what you were told to do, that's all I know.
Do you have any drawings, was, you're going to change the configuration of the house to rent it out? Are you going to add a kitchen on the third floor? Do you have any drawings or, or anything of what it's going to look like, or make any upgrades to it to rent out the, the third floor? No?
Did you supply pictures on the inside?
Yeah, you supplied, um, the halls. I'll play if I saw them.
Picture the, um, egress, did you get this?
Yeah, I saw that, the, the, the second means of egress, yes. I can vote for that, like I said, there's, there's two means of egress, front and back. I mean, it's, it's laid out, it's been used as an apartment.
Yeah.
But, and David, you've spent, you've spent a lot of time up there, in that area, you know, you've done a lot of work in the Highlands, and, you know, it's a very dense area, and I, I have a real, I couldn't do it, I couldn't vote it without proper parking, off-street parking.
Yeah.
That, that goes against everything you guys have been working up there to clean, uh, clean up the Highlands and, and improve the, and you've done a great job. If we start allowing conversions and then war cars on the street, what does that say? That defeats the whole purpose of working up there. He's had a month to come up in with a letter from KIP, you do have, you know, within, within the proper distance.
Right.
You didn't do it, you had an extra month, since you were supposed to be here on May 16th. We met you before then, so here we are, we're in June now, and there's no, there's no off-street parking.
Couldn't convince KIP if they didn't meet, they're meeting tomorrow, and?
Then, okay, then, you know something, the best you're going to do, I can see, is continue this to the next meeting.
Continue to the next meeting.
Appreciate it, yeah. Appreciate it.
That's the biggest sticking point with me.
And how many, how many cars are you going to ask to be parking across the street? Because they see, these four cars are the stat parking, this is not going to fly here.
You've got one, you've got one legitimate.
You only have one space that's good. The rest of these are no good here.
They probably have 100 parking spaces there.
But you have to have a letter saying how many cars you're going to be able to park.
And don't forget, that letter has to say, "Around."
Right, yeah.
Not just, yeah.
Indefinitely, it's not a limited.
Indefinitely.
Assume that because they're public schools.
What happens at 7 o'clock on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday morning when those cars can't be in there anymore?
They want to work.
In the school.
Oh, in school.
What happened, you're using a school, it's not like it's your church where it's used, you know, randomly, once a week maybe, or, you know, a restaurant that's maybe predominantly open in the evening time, or, you're talking about using a school which is open, you know, how many months a year, five days a week, and never mind after-school activities, KIP has, plays sports in every athletic?
Anyways, you maybe know better than me, but we never got a problem parking.
Never had a problem.
No.
You don't have that. Day and night, I've been there.
Wait a minute, you can't speak for somebody else. Remember that.
Yeah, okay.
Unless you have a letter from them, which you don't have.
Okay.
That's, that's the key to the whole thing.
Can we continue this to the next? Well, we're going to have to continue the hearing tonight, and then we'll make the order.
Yeah.
We have to see if anybody else?
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those who should just speak in favor. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Will we continue to the actual regular meeting for the parking letter? And the other thing I'd like to see is this kitchen on that apartment showing a kitchen.
I'd like to see, I want to see the second answer before we go over the odds. I want to see what you're going to do to make all, all three floors, let it be for three different people, for three families.
Yes.
I want to see what your plans are for that.
I agree. Yeah, invisible. And the next meeting will be when, Mary?
July 20. July when? 18.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, we didn't vote on it yet.
Hold on, do you have your experiment?
Is there any letters?
There's a letter, yes, there's a letter from Mr. Calucci. Dear Chairperson Curly, I respectfully request your honorable body to grant the above-mentioned petition to allow the conversion of an existing two-family residential building into a three-family residential dwelling. I have not received any neighborhood opposition or complaints regarding this proposed development. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter. Richard C. Calucci, and I'm the one that told you to call Calucci to get a letter. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, continue.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to continue.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to continue.
Did I get a copy of that letter from Curly?
I'll tell you what, if you don't have, if you don't have your act together, next time you come before, I'm, I'm not going to vote, but I'll tell you right now, I, I won't. Don't waste your time, don't waste mine.
I'll have Mary make a copy and send it to you, right? David, she gave, you gave her your address, right?
Yes.
Okay. She get that, Mary?
I don't have his address.
Uh, David, Mr. Gas, she doesn't have your address.
Do you want to come?
Please.
Well, if you want to get the letter.
Yes, sir.
Just give it to Mary. Case number 9789, 77 Hawthorne Streets. Petitioner, and forgive me, Egvy Odasowey, something like that, wait a minute, wait a minute. By his attorney, Samuel Vitale. Decision on a petition to allow construction of a two-family house on property-zoned R2 general residence district on a lot having less than minimum required area, 9,272 square feet, and less than minimum required frontage 50 feet.
My attorney, Samuel Vitale, uh, with me, our petitioner is Odasowey Egvy, is the wife of James Asimoto, they live on Hawthorne Street, they actually lived in this building at 77 Hawthorne before, uh, there was a fire that destroyed it several years ago. This is an R2 district in which two families are permitted. The lot's always been the same, 9,700 square feet, 50 feet of frontage. Character of the area, if you look at the street, is two families and one family. James and his wife, as I say, lived in the house that was a three-family that was on this lot. The three-family that was on the lot was a non-conforming building, was built in the 1900s. And in fact, James tells me, and if you look at the way the slopes at the back, that the prior owner, uh, may have had a plan to put another house on the lot because there's a foundation that was sort of on the other side of the slope. They bought it as a three-family, unfortunately, there was a fire, uh, and he, and when I said, "Well, why didn't you build in a year?" He gave me the best answer ever, which was, "I didn't know that that's what you have to do." They moved to 68 Hawthorne where they lived, they've lived on Hawthorne Street almost 12, 14 years. This lot, as I say, has always had the same dimensions. The city taxes as develop a land, the question is, what, what can go there, what shouldn't go there? And the proposal that they have, uh, before you is to construct a duplex, a two-family dwelling. James and his wife are, own a package store in Landry, they're not builders or developers. So they consulted with two different builders and developers, uh, and they decided whether they wanted to go stick-built, modular, uh, and they, they, they used the best system in the world. They went and saw something they liked, and they went and talked to the people who did it and said, "How did you do that, and what do you do?" So, the plan and the lot were state consistent with a larger home than, uh, a modular. A modular would be essentially side-by-side, 16 and 1632 would be like 32 by 36. The, uh, a sickle house, the plan that they like, which we have here, um, is, is one that's being built in the city, not in this neighborhood, uh, and, uh, so when Mr. Reed did the plan to show the site with the parking, uh, he took into account the fact, and, and obviously, one of the reasons that we're here is that the lot is a kind of, uh, my memory of, uh, my days in geometry is, I think it's an oblong. It's not a rectangle, I can tell you that, it's sort of narrower at the front and wider at the rear, um, pretty consistent on the sidelines, but much bigger across the back than it is with the 50 feet of frontage across the front.
Is it a first floor? Is it a first floor?
Is, I don't know, you're asking me, I, if I was a math major, I'd be an engineer, not a lawyer. I, I only remember, I know it's not a rectangle, that I know. It's not a rectangle, but it, it's of a regular shape, and it's got this slope, I think, if you've been there, you've seen. What they proposed to do, and what Mr. Reed did, uh, in a plan and then a revised plan, is that we would show the requirements for parking at the rear, but not so far back that it would require a serious amount of grading, of changing the shape of the lot as it sloped down to the rear. And that, uh, the, it could accommodate the three vehicles, and in fact, the three family that was there, that burned, the parking was at the rear, okay? And so, the proposal before you is to build a two-family dwelling, which is a permitted use in the district, to build it on a lot that's always been of the same shade, on a lot that once had, uh, a three-family on it, uh, for a couple who live on the street and have lived there, in fact, lived in this house, uh, and that the character of the neighborhood, we think, uh, is consistent with that, it's zoned R2. And we think that we're entitled to a variance because of three things, one is the shape, the second is the topography, the slopes, and the shape of land, and the third is that it had a three-family, and the three-family, uh, was destroyed, and they didn't act timely to, they could have gone back and built a non-conforming three-family on the lot, uh, and now what they want to do is build a brand-new two-family that satisfies everything but the two things they can't change, the lot size, uh, and the frontage. It's always going to be the same, the land's always going to be the same, it's only what, what you put on the land. And so, that's essentially the, the proposal that they have before you. The city, as I say, taxes as it develop a land, um, any, anything that would go on a lot, whether it be a single family, or a two-family, or anything that goes on a lot, would require, uh, your approval. And then, uh, that's why we're here.
So what's he proposing to build it?
Excuse me?
What's he proposing to build?
This?
Physically, what does it look like?
Uh, that's why we brought these separate plans. This is a townhouse, uh, constructed in Landry, these are the townhouses that John Loudfield built up a farm on, they're similar.
These are the stick-built, the stick-built.
That's a stick-built house, right. The modular company is New England Homes, and then they will build anything you want, custom-made.
Yes.
And the difference is this, uh, and this is one of the things that we considered about the topography, that, um, one of the things that we considered was putting parking under, but the parking under, we got to dig down in that site, and we got to have construction that's suitable, to have a garage that goes down and under. And since the parking before had been at the rear, and we can accommodate the required number, we thought we would do that. It would still allow, uh, a large portion along the right side, and all of that portion at the rear, because the lot goes back to be grass or landscaped or whatever.
These are the houses that Mr. Muldoon is building down on Westland?
Yeah, and Mr., Mr., the couple met with two, two builders, okay? Douglas Hi and, and Mr. Muldoon, okay? They liked Mr. Muldoon's plan, okay? But then Doug explained to them that you could take this plan, you, you can order anything you want nowadays in the modular world, and, uh, they can custom-build it, and, but you still need to do the site work. So that was one of the, the things about the footprint, and making certain that if the building was dropped on the lot, that, uh, we'd have the sufficient parking, and we wouldn't have to do a lot of, uh, other site preparation. The plan would be to, uh, bring in separate utilities for each side.
You have to do that anyway.
I don't know. I, I know that we don't need to bring a dedicated line for sprinkler because it's only a two, I know that, but.
No, still have water.
Excuse me?
Still have water except that.
Okay, so, all right, so you still got, all right, so we're going to do that? All right, all right. And so that we would bring in the line, then that would allow, you know, it would allow then each person, uh, that, to be responsible for their water bill, because then that would be separately made, if that's the case.
So I got one question. Based on, based on the, um, size of that one, uh, this, this is the front, two separate doorways, but it looks like that building would have to go sideways on this, on this lot.
No, 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 Reed drew that, that to accommodate the size of, of that one. You, if you look at Reed's most recent plan, you'll see he revised it a couple of times. He went, and then he went out and staked it. So we ultimately went to the, to the larger footprint, and I'm told that it can be custom-built any way you want it.
Well, let me say, let me put it this way, um, and I'm just trying to get clarification, but your, your front is 34. 34 feet, so that would mean each side is only 17. Right. Where, if it was inside though, and you thought, and you'd keep, each side would be 22 wide, the front?
Well, I thought Reed had changed the plan, I can show you his earlier plan. Well, Joe, you have his earlier plan, you can hear. You, you have, I gave you the earlier plan. So you have both plans.
Here's the new one, here you go.
I got an old one, he's got a new one, and my size is different than his.
Excuse me?
I've got an old one, he's got a new one. Mine says 32, his says 34.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if you look at the most recent one, the hatch marks, we had it distinguished out.
I know it now, but I didn't know it a minute ago.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
I sent it out, I printed it today.
And why we revised it is that we wanted to have flexibility to go, we needed a collage one, and the only real difference in the layout, as I understand it, is before the driveway, it was 12 feet wide, now it's 10 feet wide.
Yeah.
Well, Sam, the, the, the Romans said the building's 44 feet wide from side to side.
This is the new one, huh? See, this is the new one, it's different than that one.
Well, I guess it's 34, it's like 44.
Yeah.
And that's what Muldoon gave us, it's a little.
He's looking at an old one like I'm looking at.
Oh, this, yeah, this, have you got the hatch mark one? Yeah, you do, and you have the earlier one.
Yeah, you've got this one, yeah. But, I guess.
What if you were told that you're winning homes? You tell them what you want, you give them the dimensions, they design, they deliver it, they're going to do it.
No, I'm just trying to figure out if the front of that, of that house is the 44 feet.
When I talk, I did talk with, I talked with both of these people. Hi told me that his buildings were 16 and 1632, I think.
But Sam, he's got, Reed has the house placed on the house, look a long way. If you place this house on the site, the front door, side-to-side dimension of the house according to his drawings is forty-four feet.
Yeah.
You have the side-to-side front dimension of the house at thirty-four feet. It's ten feet off.
But we can, both builders told us they could custom-build it to the footprint. And we had to decide, two, having two decisions are made, whether you wanted it stick-built or modular, how much you wanted it to be.
But how do you bring plans that don't fit?
Because the builder who said he would stick-build it, when he showed a series of plans, showed him that plan and they liked that plan. He then said it can be custom-built. Because I picked up what Dan was saying. Is that, I mean, I can't read twins as well as you guys, but I saw that in terms of the dimension. So, to be safe, we should stake it as big as he could without requiring any other additional relief of dimensional violations.
You stake that property?
Yeah. It says right on the floor, you stake it on June the fifth.
It was, I was there.
My God, the grass is that high?
I went out there, I took my life in my hands, but I was under.
Well, I mean-
Was it, it was staked?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, let me tell you this. You went in there then, right?
I walked in there.
You walked in there. It was pouring rain and I stood at the railing out here. The grass was so darn high that you never saw a stake. Never, I never saw a stake.
Just the problem I have is, this is what I do. And I don't see how you lose ten feet of width out of this house to still have the floor plans and the stairs work the way that they do.
I hear you.
So I just, I don't see it.
So what we've been told is that if we want a house that's thirty-four by forty-four or thirty-two by thirty-eight, we can get it.
Oh, yeah. But the whole dynamic of the house is changing. Ten feet of width is massive out of the house.
See, oh, I said it's a little bit of a drive.
No, ten feet of width out of a house is huge. It's a big cut out of the house, it's going to change the whole dynamic of the house.
Well, High said show smaller, side-by-side. His word, and I think Mr. Cole said seventeen. I think High said he had sixteen and sixteen, that's how he got to thirty.
Just like Tally, this plan is not the proper plan we should have right here now. It doesn't show us.
Well, it would be if the house was going to the lot sideways.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it's doing. And that's all I mean, just, that's all I want to know.
It wouldn't be the end of the world either.
No, because we've, we've always been able to make sure that the front was buffed up and that it looked, it looked presentable.
You know, what's the side of the house looking like, you know?
I just don't know if we get enough information to make a decision on what the house is going to be done.
We don't.
Get the stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's weird.
Just like Tally, you only see Mr. Cole said, sometimes we allow them in sideways, but the front has to be, but the wood stuff so it looks like the front of the house.
Unfortunately, all the, all the appeal of this house is in the front.
Yeah.
The sides are very, very, very plain and, which I get it, they're academic. They're not the money, the money shot of the house is the front side of the house. I get that. So even if you turned it sideways, I think you'd be doing it to service to the neighborhood at that point. I mean, it's a beautiful home, it's just not, everything's not, it doesn't all die. It's not what they got for it.
I don't know if they push it back some. If they pushed it back, they'd have more room.
Oh, you pushed it back?
Yeah, would have more room on the sides.
Oh, yeah, but then if you've been on the site-
Well, I mean, the shape, like the front, you know? Further back you get, the more sideline you get.
Yeah, further back you go, you have the sideline for this one.
Yes.
But I think there's a point where it sort of rocks down and goes down the slope.
I'm only saying that's consideration. You'd have to go retaining walls. But you could fit it in that way. If you moved it towards the rear, it wouldn't line up with the houses on the street. But it doesn't matter, in a way.
So you're saying if you did it sideways-
Well, I mean, I mean, you need to do more work on where it's going to go. You know what I'm saying? Rather than say-
If you move it back about twenty-five, thirty feet, you'd be at ten feet.
Yeah, well, you probably-
All that, we should do bottom first.
Yeah, I mean, we've always done, we're-
Maybe they can tweak the house a little or that.
Yeah, that's what Mouldon will do.
Yeah, wait a minute. But that's a drastic tweak. Ten feet, I agree with Mr. Gisano. There's no way you can rearrange that. I mean, that is a beautiful set of plans. Can't fit where that shows right there.
Unless it was sideways. The sideways, you want it further back.
No, well sideways, they could stay where it is, but the side of the house is all just nice to the front of the house, that's the problem.
Yeah, then the front of the house looks like it shouldn't be in there.
Well, not to mention you've got walkout patios off the back of the house, which is great. It's a great feature. But now you're putting somebody's patio on the sidewalk. They're going to be right out, you know, they're going to be-
I hear what you're saying.
They're going to be twelve feet out the street with their patio, which kind of stinks for the-
You know, they would have to come through with a design. If you say that they can work it, to me, they're Houdini or something. Maybe they should come through with their plan showing, so it suits the petitioner.
Yeah.
You know, you know, there isn't doubt. I've never heard anything like that, that they could change it that much. I may have read a lot of plans, my best friend.
Well, I'm not putting that house in sideways.
You can't swing it.
I said, I'm not putting that house in sideways.
I, I think this can be done. I just, I think ten feet out of this house is going to make some drastic changes. And I think, in all fairness, you want to see that too.
Yeah, we want to see it.
You want to see the plan because it's going to be a completely different layout than what you have here, I'll tell you. Just by looking at the layout of the first floor. Go home and take five feet out of each side. Look at where the stairways land and stuff like that. It's just, it's going to change a lot, so I think-
Size of the rooms, everything.
I think in all fairness to yourselves, you want, whoever's telling you that they can do it, haven't drawn up with it.
I mean, it's a good concept and it's a nice lot there.
Yeah, nice five to the six.
Yeah.
It's great up here, just, it's not bad.
Yeah, those houses are all tonal build up there attached to them. You can't shrink it.
The Cleveland.
Huh?
It's the Cleveland.
You've got to turn the stairs up. You know, to get the room back.
See what they call?
What, the Cleveland?
That's what they call the design.
I know, but-
It's not something I like.
It's the Cleveland. It's like the name.
Excellent.
I explained to James, Mr. Mouldon, when he said, he said that you're right, Mr. Gisano, with respect to the, knowing what the rooms look like is important.
Of course.
And as I said to you at the outset, you know, he's in the package store business, he's not a builder. And he's gone to two people who are builders. Each builder said, hey, you can, whatever it is you want, we can build, which is, I should-
That doesn't mean you're going to like it when it's finished.
Yeah, but-
I think he got to do more work in that design and we could continue and you could go back with a different design maybe.
Well, I think that's a good suggestion, I was saying to you that that's how we sort of got to a little wreck.
Yeah, that's all right.
And then, well-
This is nothing new, happens all the time.
I mean, it sounds like a good idea until you get to talk to a lot of people and you realize it wasn't as good idea as you thought. Because you're not seeing what you're paying for. And that's very important. You don't want to end up with-
And I honestly think that, what you say is so. I think we try to keep the street line, we wouldn't want to go twenty-five feet back.
Yeah.
Well, the dining room's eleven feet wide. The stairway comes down into it. If I take ten feet out of the house, the dining room in each unit's going to be five feet wide. So just, I mean, it's that simple, simple math. By looking at simple stuff like that, you know, what's a beautiful dining room, a beautiful staircase, gets ruined in a minute by taking ten feet out of the house. So obviously, what we're voting for isn't what is going to be built. And that's not that bad, so are you.
Well, we suggest that we continue with further information, more information.
Yeah.
Different design. And-
I think that one of the things you've got to decide, I don't think he wants the house on the side.
We don't either.
Yeah. So, I don't, I don't mind considering it to feeling, but it's got to fit into the neighborhood.
Yes.
So.
Yep.
All right, we'll just continue.
Continue?
Any, anyone else who want to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishes to speak in favor? Hearing none here is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition?
Anyone have any questions they'd like answered?
Would you come up and give your name, please, and address? Judge Johnson, seventy-three, Offen Street. Seventy-three, so we're right next door to the lot that's empty. So, just, we wanted to hear what the lot, the plans were and stuff. Our concerns are where the stakes are. We looked, and the ones that you can see are very close to our lot line. And I think probably less than ten feet to our driveway fence. And so, for us, our concern was parking, some of, you know, the parking, and they addressed that somewhat, that there'll be some parking in the back. But where we looked at the stakes, I don't see where people are going to get through to the back because there's really not much space.
You've got these, basically, the house would be eight feet from your property line at the, at the front of the house, the way it is.
Yes, at the front, correct.
You've got seven and a half feet by law, he's, he's got eight feet.
And the driveway, driveway's on the lot.
It's ten feet wide.
Okay, so when I looked at it, it could just be, maybe the lot lines aren't exactly where the fences are and stuff. It certainly didn't look like a car could get through.
Yeah, you can't go by fences, it's the property lines that point. From the ground that they go.
Are you on the right of the law?
But the driveway, the driveway isn't on your side.
Right, that's right there, two hands.
The driveway isn't on your side?
No.
No, not on the line.
No, it wouldn't be based on this. So we didn't, we're just looking at stakes, so we don't know where anything is. But I think probably our thought was as well that if the house was just moved back, and I know that every other house on the street is towards the front of the lot, but it just would seem to make a lot more sense to have the house set back a little bit. Just, just, it creates more space for, you know, in between the property lines for where the house is. And that's just our thought. And that's just our personal, because we live there, right? Like you're talking about moving it sideways and so, turned it, their back porch could be- And, and we don't really do much living on that side. It's a driveway and a garage and, and back there out there. But it just, I think-
You do have some.
The proximity, just is more our concern.
Why were you there?
We lived there eight years, almost nine.
So you weren't there when this was a two thing?
We were not, it was always an empty lot.
Oh, that, that-
Yeah, so we don't know, I know.
I was going to ask the same question, I was, this is probably better than the three family.
Yeah, we weren't there when it was a three family, so it's always been empty. And, you know, we've done the shoveling in the winter and stuff like that. And so, you know, we've helped to keep this up kind of, but we would like to take into consideration of the proximity to the lot.
We understand.
Yeah, we agree.
Okay, that's it.
Anyone else have any questions over there? Any questions? So, hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak against. What is the wish of the board?
Motion, Mr. Phil.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gisano, seconded by Mr. Callen, to continue. Please call the roll. Mr. Wood?
Yes, can you guys have this ready by the next meeting? Or do you want laundry, you want, you want to try for the next meeting, Sam?
Yeah, because I think you're on it once a month now.
Yeah. I'm asking, yeah.
Is it the thirteenth?
The eighteenth.
The eighteenth of July.
With those descriptions, we can go back to the people and-
They could go.
They could go.
Eighteenth of July.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Sounds good. We should do it. All right. No, Mr.? All right, we can follow up.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
All right.
Continue case number nine, seven, eight, six, four, seventeen, four, twenty-three, Boston Street. Petitioner A.L. Prime Energy Consultant Inc. by its attorney, Samuel Vitale. Decision on petition to appeal concerning whether the City of Lynn Zone Ordinance, Section sixteen, Site Plan Review, applies to proposed development involving the relocation of existing parking spaces.
It's like Tally.
I believe that you had us on for a meeting in May and the, there wasn't five, or wouldn't be five members of the five members that heard it. That was one reason why it didn't happen in May. The other was when we left from the hearing that we had had, you'd made a request to the city solicitor. And the last question I got asked was probably one of the better ones. Mr. Gisano said, well, what are you concerned about about the site plan review? And to the extent that I could, I answered. And then, I then said in that answer, well, we are considering other alternatives. And so, since that time, we prepared two other plans. Because we still sort of hold to our first interpretation, but our objective is to get the place built, all right? And one of the concerns, I think, that I expressed here and I've expressed at other places is that we didn't want to have, what we would consider at least, an onerous condition put on us. And, and an onerous condition might be, because there are several criteria under site plan review. And we evaluated all of those criteria. And one of the concerns that we had was that they, we might get imposed on us the requirement to make traffic improvements not on our site. And, and that was a legitimate concern, it still is a concern. But we've been advised that that really is not a well-founded concern, that, it had two things. A, we shouldn't be concerned that that will happen. And B, if it did happen, that we would have a remedy. Unfortunately for you guys, the remedy would be come back to the Board of Appeals and complain about the condition and now you think that's unreasonable, okay? In the self-help world, we prepared another plan and another one, all right? We shared those plans with people in the Inspectorial Services Department to get their reaction. They were consistent in their view in that when they looked at, let's call it Plan Two or Plan B or whatever, not the one you saw. They said, well, if you're going to relocate a space, then it needs a plan review. Then they looked at the next plan and they said, well, in this one, and in both plans, we reduced the size of the building and we reduced the number of parking spaces. And they said, well, this one, at least, you know, our initial reaction is this one wouldn't require. So then we asked them a second question. We said, if we were to go down this path and we were unhappy and we didn't want to come back to you guys, could we just go do this one? And I think their initial reaction to that was, yeah, because either you do require it or you don't require it, and if you don't require it, you can go do it, okay? So, I took that information to my clients and said, it looks like you got like door A, B, C, the tiger, the princess, and whatever. So you've got to make a decision. And so, I think we're close to that. But in fairness to them and in fairness, since we only presented these alternatives recently, okay? We want to at least have the ability to make a decision which we think will obviate either A, this appeal, because we're going to submit it to site plan review. At that point, you don't have to say anything. Or, we're going to choose not to go to site plan review, make our improvements, and live to fight another day if that's the battle we want to be in. But the real thing we want to do is open the station. And, and so, those are the alternatives that we're considering. To achieve that, then I would say, I would ask you, since the last time the matter was continued was because you guys didn't have a form, not because I asked you to. But I wanted you to know because I took the heart that one of the members, in fact, a couple of members said, and asked, oh, yeah, okay, to draw other alternatives. And then, we ran those alternatives by the powers that be, we got that reaction. And so, that's sort of where we're at. And so, if we had that added time, then I think this either A goes away because by then we will have submitted it to site plan review, or we will have submitted a plan that doesn't require site plan review. Or they will have put some condition on, which we might be unhappy with, in which case we either go to the plan that doesn't require it or we'd have to come back and complain to you, is what we were told.
So we're adding the continuance?
Yeah, but I wanted to point one.
Yes, I understand. I, I personally don't have a problem with that.
Continuance for how long?
To the next meeting, because...
Next meeting.
Because we think we can do those self-help things between now and then.
Right, that's fair enough.
And, uh, if, if either of those were to occur, it sort of makes this a move.
Well, the other thing is, if we were to take a vote and, and tonight and say, well, based on Solicitor, um, Solicitor Barry's opinion that we agree with, that, yeah, we think you should go to site plan review, then that, now you know exactly what your two options are.
Except, there's a third option, which again, I have an obligation to tell people, which is, if the Board of Appeals denies something, they have a statutory right to appeal. Whether that's a good idea or a bad idea is a different story. And, and I may have my views on that, but I, I'll tell you a try and end in 25 words or less. It's, it's, in my view, if that were to occur, I think my view gets upheld, because I think it, on a, on the best day, that wording is ambiguous, and I told you at the outset, if it's ambiguous, then it favors the landowner. But if I were wrong, okay, and, and the interpretation is that, uh, you move one space, you need site plan review, well, you're right, I'm back where I started, I have to go to site plan review, but forever. Now, until somebody of higher authority changes the ordinance, it means everybody that comes in with one parking space moved, is gonna have to go through site plan review. But if you never have to decide that, or if we never have to force that issue, life goes on.
Well, like I said, um, you know, I'm inclined to support the, the city solicitor's opinion. I mean, I want to see this thing get built, but at this point in time, I'm, I'm inclined to support Solicitor Barry's opinion, whether I do it now or I do it a month from now. To, to me, your two, you've still got the same options, uh, B or C. We're just taking this one, and you can appeal this one. But, well, I, I just don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, get to a point where we're not just spinning our wheels or wasting everybody's time. That's, that's my only point, because I am gonna vote, I have to vote at this point on this particular petition to support the, um, the city and, and say that I think it should go to site...
Yes.
...plan review. That's how, that's so.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Cole. And I'd like to see a place built, yes, would be nice. But we would have to back Michael Barry's opinion there.
Well, I, I think even one step further. The information we were shown today, barring option B and C, our opinion would be, we would have to follow what the city solicitor's opinion is, and it would have to go to site plan review.
Right.
Which leaves you no worse off than...
Right.
Where you were if we continued it, right? Because you still have option B and C, which you're exploring, and if you come back to us with option A, at least you know, you don't, don't bother, we, we're gonna follow what the city says. So I don't think you're any worse off for us.
And what if his client, what if his client wants to appeal and go to court?
He can.
I know he can.
It won't be the last.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Well, I don't go along with that. I think it should, I think you should be allowed to have it continued. We've gone this far, what's another little, what's another month?
I agree with Mrs. Cole.
Yeah.
What's another month to let them have?
Yes, I messed up. Well, I'm...
And, and...
I'm just saying, is there any, no, again, I'm, I'm just trying to put, put the fact to the table. Is it, is it gonna change anything a month from now on, on this particular petition?
If, if honestly...
On this particular position?
Is that if we were to submit it to site plan review, it makes this appeal move. To you, okay? Uh, if we submit a plan that doesn't require site plan review, you're not involved in it, okay? But I hear what you're saying is that a potential outcome of, of this one. But then, it, it, I have an obligation to tell people that if you get denied, you have these choices. I hear that they can make the choices, but I can't tell them which choice to make, okay? And there's the real world, there's the legal world, there's my opinion, there's some guy in the black world, there's Clint's opinion. Uh, so one of the reasons we explored other alternatives is because we really are focusing on trying to get...
Good.
The station built.
Right.
Okay, so another month, and you, you will come up with a definitive...
Well, we, we, we took a step that way.
Yeah.
And I think, you see, I'll, I'll tell you candidly, I don't think it's really a legal decision. Which choice, that's a business, I, I'm not in the business of telling gas stations what they sure they shouldn't build. They come to me and say, I want to build that, and I say, okay, this is what you have to do, all right? But whether they build it this way or that way, or whether they go through this process or that process, ultimately is a, because it's, why is it a business decision? Because it relates to money, plans, and lawyers, and whatever. So, uh, I can't substitute my judgment for them. I only have an obligation to tell them what I know are their rights. They then make the decision as to which or how they want to exercise their own.
Okay, so I think we should go for the vote.
I think you should vote to, I mean, I, I'd like to vote to continue. I mean, I, I think it's a wonderful idea. I'd love to see that whole corner cleaned up, and for the sake of one parking space, we're going crazy here.
Yeah.
I mean, if you wouldn't, if you wouldn't buy this week, on, on this end of Federal and Western, you can see what's going on.
My question is to, to the, to the members of the board. If they come back next month, you're not gonna vote for option A overriding the advice you were given by the city solicitor, correct?
I'm not, no, I'm not.
So what's, what's the point of coming back next month unless...
Because how do you know what he's gonna have? He might not have that option, he may be going for, for something else.
But option B and C don't apply us at all, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
No, there's one, no, we had another, we had two different ones in the map. We showed them to the people in the building department, one of which they said, well, if you do that one... So, so there's a different little decision. It's whether to go to site plan review with A or with B, okay? All right. And then there's another decision that says, never mind A and B, they've told us you can go for C. And then they told us one other thing. They said, you could go for A and B, and that won't preclude you from doing C. Then we asked them, is it either or? And they said, no, you could do this and you can do that. So, but, but again, that's, that's a choice that I, I don't get to make, me.
So, so there's these hours, the continuance will decide that.
But that, I hope that that would get us off in that time, because we're...
Because that's your last chance of discord.
I don't understand whether option A and B have to go to site plan review according to the city solicitor. Why would we listen to either A or B again, ever? We're not gonna go against what the city's telling us, because...
Explain that again, will you explain that better so that everybody understands?
Option A, hold on a second. Uh, option A, we've already heard, and we have a letter from the city attorney that says we should, you know, it should go to site plan review. Option B has already been presented to ISD, who says, we think that this plan also needs to go to site plan review. They presented option C, which the city said, this isn't so bad. I don't think you'd have a problem with this, and it doesn't need to go to site plan review at all. So, these guys now have a decision, do we want to do option A, B, or C?
But I don't have a letter here from the city solicitor that says option B has to go to site plan review.
Does it?
Doesn't. I don't think it...
If, if I may, I, I, I might look at Attorney Vitale this morning, and so, right, as, as Chairman Gisano states, there's an existing proposal that, that was presented to ISD, and, and the opinion was that this will need site plan review, and that opinion is under appeal before you this evening. You, you've heard from the both of us, you've heard the opinion of the city solicitor that it does require site plan review. Nothing is gonna change about any of those circumstances the next 30 days, 45 days, 90 days, 90 years. There, there are two other proposals that, that were brought to the building department this morning. One involves relocating spaces to a different location, still involves relocating places. My opinion is that it still requires site plan review. If that were to be submitted and requesting a permit, I would tell Attorney Vitale that he needed to submit an application for site plan review. There's a third option, which admittedly, I, I think Attorney Vitale would agree, is the least favorable option. The existing spaces on this parcel are, are back and hidden away from the street, behind the existing service station. The third option is that renovations could be done to the existing service station. The other building on the right side of the parcel could come down and be rebuilt in such a way that it didn't require site plan review, because it's less than 5,000 square feet, and will keep the 12 spaces that are currently hidden away from the public in the back, and that we don't have to go through site plan review. So, the, the bottom line is, the, the options that are available to the developer are, go through site plan review with option A, go through site plan review with option B, present a application for a building permit to do Plan C, and then either decide at some subsequent point to create a parking area in the front of that new convenience store, or just have the spaces hidden in the back side of the convenience store. But none of those choices are gonna change whether or not this board this evening opines about option A.
Thank you. Because who else would continue?
But if, if, if the matter were continued, then the, the difference would, would be that they could then continue to decide whether or not they're going to appeal you if you deny them, which it sounds like everybody's saying would happen in 30 days, but we should come back in 30 days for that to happen.
I think they should have the chance. We went through all this, and I think they should have the chance.
And, and certainly you have a vote and I don't. My, my only point is that if there's no additional information to be submitted in the next 30 days, I, I, I don't understand the point in delaying the decision.
I don't have a letter here from the city solicitor that says Plan B has to go to site plan review. I just have you.
You're never gonna get a letter, an advisory letter from them unless you ask for one. That's not what typically happens.
And I think they should have the extra money. It's not a big deal.
Again, I'm not sure why you're arguing with me. I, I, I'm just, I was answering a question from, from the board. I, I appreciate that your opinion is quite settled, thank you.
So is yours. You're welcome. What is the wish of the board?
Will we continue to the next annual meeting?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Woods, to continue for the next meeting. Please call the roll. Mr. Wood?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Gisano?
No.
Mr. Cole?
No.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to continue.
Mrs. Cole? Yes, to continue. No, no.
Only takes the majority. It's only a majority to continue.
Oh, so we may?
Yeah.
Huh?
Think.
I think I'll go with the death case. I think I don't...
It's three, three, right, that's right, it's to be continued.
Because we do reconsideration, you know, for...
You're right, it's three, it's to be continued. Thank you.
I was gonna watch you get all the way to the door before I called.
Have one more thing to do.
Oh, you have to get to the street.
They don't get locked up here, it's not gonna be...
We have one more...
No, we're not, Soul Street is nothing to want.
What is this?
That's, that's the one I've been talking to you about.
So what are we gonna do?
Nothing, he, he needs, Pat says he needs to extend a letter, and then we can approve.
What's that?
On Soul Street.
Oh, yeah, that's...
A letter?
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
He doesn't know that, so I'll tell him.
Okay.
Okay.
It's gotta be a letter.
Meeting adjourned.
Yeah, because that...